I'd like to call to approve. Our adjutant session, agency staff housing third and council. August the eighth, grabbing a special close session at five o'clock. You want to tell us all about that, please?
I can perform the role on these, sir?
Who's on hold?
Council, agency, authority member Taylor?
Here.
Council, agency, authority member Torres is absent currently. Council, agency, authority member Warren?
There.
Mayor for town vice chair Chris Van, and mayor chairman Schaller.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, how are we going to do?
Okay, thank you, mayor and council. We have four items in close session. The first item is conference with legal counsel regarding litigation one case, which is Tina Pacific Residents Association versus the Stanton. We have a conference with real property negotiator regarding the listed properties on Tina Way and Pacific Avenue. We also have a conference with legal counsel regarding disputed litigation. Number of potential cases is one, followed by public employee performance evaluation. The title is City Manager. That's all I've got. Thank you.
I'm going to recess. Let's go.
And confirm, Mr. Mayor, there are no public comments on close session items.
There's Donald.
Council.
I asked for it.
Close session at five o'clock here.
Yeah. I'm going to read to me, or let you see council meeting. We just got our close session. Uh, very good.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, we'll go ahead and, um, hold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, agency, authority member Taylor?
Here.
Council, agency, authority member Torres?
Here.
Council, agency, authority member Warren?
There.
Mayor for town vice chair Chris Van? And mayor chairman Schaller?
Here.
Thank you.
Could you please all join me in a pledge? Ready, again.
When the citizens comply, when we rise to the stage of America, in true republic, gorgeous sense, one nation, under God, invisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, we have special awards. This will be a presentation by the planning commission sharing their vision with the city council of providing information on their current operations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is your out.
Neat. Uh, well, Mr. Mayor, councilman, thank you very much for inviting the planning commission to share with you what has been happening and with the commission. Uh, for the past one and a half years, we have approved projects, residential developments, commercial activity, code amendments, and also have reviewed the housing element, uh, which is keeps the city in constant, uh, state requirements. So a very important part of what we, uh, look at each time it comes through. We have also held many workshops and study sessions, including the housing legislation from the state of California. Uh, and that has been the most recent workshop that we've had and very, very informative, especially since it's always changing so much. We, as a commission, are extremely happy that the city council has brought on Ms. Lenda Baso as our director for the planning commission. She has an open door policy and has helped us through, uh, our questions and, um, who gave and given us leadership as we look at each of the projects. She hasn't fired us yet, so we're doing good, I guess. We understand that the city council has, uh, they've looked at the budget and including a raise for our staff, and we feel personally that this is very important in order that you are recognizing their complete expertise and professionalism. Hopefully, this will allow us to keep our amazing staff rather than be a revolving door for other opportunities, and we felt that, so we want that to stop. And I'm glad that city council seems to be for it as well. A concern that we have are the numerous restrictions that the state is putting on the cities, and this is so many times makes it very difficult for our residents to understand why we have maybe approved or even disapproved a project because, well, I don't want that behind me. That's great, I understand that, but we, that is not a reason to deny a project, and they, and our residents don't understand. So it gets very frustrating, um, that things get approved or the opposite of, of what the residents want, and we try to explain to them, but sometimes it's difficult. In closing, we are working very closely with our excellent staff that make sure that all the projects that come before us are in line with the city goals, and our decisions are made for what is best for Stanton. Do you have any questions?
Oh, good.
Elizabeth, um, I was going to make a recommendation. I noticed that a lot of times we're dark, we don't have meetings, but the planning commission, it might be who does. I think something that I would personally like to say, I, I hope it will be supported by the rest of the council. At your meetings, maybe you could begin to review some of our city ordinances and some of our zoning, uh, things that we've done in the city. Uh, we need to bring some of the things that we do up to speed. Um, I know that we're working with our staff in doing that, but I really like to add the input of the planning commission also to take a look at some of the things that we're doing, both on the code enforcement issue, but also in the zoning productivity. I think there's some things that, uh, if we can change, it might want to change, and if there's some things that we might want to do to improve the quality of life, we might want to do that. So I think that would be a good task for you. I would give you something more to put on your agenda so that you have an opportunity to get more involved in the formation of what's worked on the future.
And we certainly will look forward to working with Ms. Lenda Baso and our staff in, uh, doing that.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're now having a presentation by the Association of California Cities Works County ACCOC.
I'd like to introduce the district's current executive director, the ACCOC, to have all.
Good evening, Mayor Schaller, and members of the council and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We do have a presentation I would like to walk through. We wanted to share with you, um, really just a thank you, uh, on a touch base for your investment and support of the ACCOC as we work with, um, all of our cities, all of our, uh, educational institutions, our public agencies to represent Orange County, not just here at home, but regionally at the state and the federal level. So thank you for this opportunity tonight, and I promise I'll be ready because I know you have an awful lot to get through.
Do I turn it off? Yes, go ahead, number seven, one more time.
One more time.
The next one?
Oh, thank you. I'll go back. I think I have. Okay, thanks. So just a little recap about what ACCOC is and why you are a member and investing, but we represent the interests of our cities on our regional public policy issues. Our members and our affiliate members, which are a lot of our public agencies, private businesses, nonprofits, uh, higher education institutions, are governed by a board of directors, and we operate as a final one C three. We are established in 2011 under the philosophy that Orange County needs a collaborative voice. So we really try to find those issues that bring everyone together on public policy issues that impact our communities. So here is, right now, we are 23 members of our 34 strong. We are working to bring all of them back to the full sun left over COVID and, um, and for financial reasons, but we're really trying to work with our cities to get everybody back to the table because we are stronger together. And then you can see all of our affiliates as well, and you'll have this presentation, and then we have some materials for you that outline all of this and the packets we provided earlier as well. But really strong affiliate membership to make sure that our voice is quite large and diverse and representative of the entire county. This is our board of directors. All of these individuals give so much, um, above and beyond their work as elected officials to our county. Uh, and, and like all, all of you serving on regional boards and commissions, a lot of that does not have extra income, there's no real glory, but you do it because you're passionate about public service, and that is the same with our board of directors, and we're so appreciative because we don't have the capacity to provide stipends or additional income. They all give above and beyond on all of their sleeves and are very invested in the opportunity of our policy, education, standpoint, and advocacy for our, for our communities. So our standing committees, which I hope you will take advantage of our energy, environment, water, uh, legislative and regulatory, housing, and then homelessness and solutions, and then we're bringing back economic development and tourism because it's so foundational to a lot of our industries, uh, and really TOT and sales tax and a lot of what funds our general funds, and then transportation and infrastructure as well. Uh, some of these meet monthly, some meet every month, some meet quarterly, but you're all invited, always welcome to participate, both you on the dice and your staff, and a lot of them are virtual, and then, uh, we're also working in a lot of infrastructure tours so that we do more than our hands on and build tactile, or put into the field and see these projects up close and personal as it relates to all of these various policy issues. We've really revamped this year. If you're not seeing it, please let us know, but we have revamped our website. Please go on and look where in the next couple of weeks our member portal is going to be totally revitalized with a lot of resources as a world resource library for city officials on everything you need, just to have everything at your fingertips, whether it's your contacts for local officials and state officials and federal officials to all the policy issues, all of the materials that are provided and events and programs, um, just a vast resource, and then we're going to really invest in research and development and, and really promoting the best practices for our communities. So we've relaunched that website. We also have new newsletters, our Policy Pulse, which is weekly, and that's really a highlight, cat, you know, just a snapshot of the issues of the week, and then our Open Session newsletter, which is monthly and does a deeper dive on, on different issues. Uh, and then we're in the process of bringing back an ACCOC podcast, and so we will probably be reaching out to see if we can. I know we will be reaching out to do that. Uh, our programming, we've revamped in a really big way. We host a lot of events and edu-, you know, really focus on education to serve our cities to really give back and give you an opportunity to learn, uh, not just for new, a lot of programming has, um, been about for new members to sort of delay the land and better understand some of the policies we'll be dealing with, but we really want that continuing education component for our tenure officials as well. Uh, our state and federal advocacy program came back in a big way this year in both Sacramento DC, super successful. We ran everyone ragged, but I, I think they, if you talk to anybody who went, they just felt there was so much value, so hopefully you'll join us next year. Um, our quarterly dinner programs, we just had in June, a Smart City program with an incredible panel that really has expertise on some of the best practices to help connectivity for communities and sustainability for communities worldwide, and what are some of those really innovative things happening around the world? And then again, we're doing educational forums and infrastructure tours. Right now, we just had the first of four sessions for our Public Policymakers Academy, or the PPMA that we're doing with UCI. It's every Friday in August, and again, deep dive on big policy issues facing our cities. And again, it's all about providing meaningful support to our county leaders who are serving our cities and our region. And really keeping, and I want to go back really quick, our mantra is keeping OC in local government, making sure that that local control is there and the unique governance and input from our cities is intact and protected as we go forward, and that gets harder and harder as issues become more complex, but that is our mantra. These are just some of our programs. This year, I gave you a snapshot with some of the flyers and programs that we've had, but we had our new elected officials orientation and training, and we do that 1234 and 1661 certifications for those that just want to bang it out. We get it done first thing in the morning with legal experts to help you get that all done, and you can just check that box right away after you're elected. A really, uh, important program we did with OC sheriff this year, our mass shooting and critical incident preparedness program. Sadly, that is an issue facing all too many communities, um, around the nation, certainly here at home, um, and our officials are often blindsided when these things happen. Our communities are, the fabric is literally torn and seared when these incidents happen. People's lives have been lost, and communities affected in every possible way, and making sure our officials have a pathway to respond and have some training and some thought as to how they will respond is just absolutely essential. And so we did in partnership with law enforcement, not just here locally, but also Department of Homeland Security, White House Government Affairs, and then some of the legal experts and officials who've been on those front lines of these incidents that occurred. It was incredible. Even our law enforcement officials, you would think had gotten jaded and really used to this state the entire day, and really participated to the very end with breakout sessions and some phenomenal speakers, and I still get chills when I think about how well that program went. So that is one we want to do every year because this issue is sadly wrapping up and not receiving nationally. Uh, our Sacramento advocacy program that I talked about, our Smart City Dinner, PPMA, um, our infrastructure tours, we've done tours of primary bridges place, we have done, um, tours of affordable housing projects and how well they're immersed in our communities and actually add value rather than detract and give people that better understanding and then all of our committees that we've done on monthly or bi-monthly basis. These are some of our upcoming programs and hope you'll join us. We have our legislative roundtable and summer reception tomorrow night. I know that some of your officials, city staff, will join us. If you still want to come, we can still make, we still have room. It's going to be phenomenal. We have eight elected officials, uh, state officials, we have three state senators and, um, five assembly, uh, people who are going to be there and talk and really give some insight into what's happening in Sacramento as part of our roundtable from 4:30 to 5:30 in the summer reception, and then some people will really get to know your colleagues. Um, and then it's, we really focused this one on being family friendly. So Wild Rivers is hosting us, the kids, so your kid, you can bring your kids, you don't have to leave them at home this time, and they can just have a blast while you do your work, and then you can join them afterwards. So, um, real, uh, we really wanted to make that one family friendly and really focus on, on getting back to our members. Our PPMA, we have three more sessions, including this Friday and the rest of the month. Just, it's, it's going so well. We have a really nice mix of both council members, um, staff, as well as mayors who are participating in that. We had a little hydrogen tour with our local water district and OCFA on the 27th of August. We really see some video equipment to deal with our fires, our wildland areas, and the hydrogen house tour, we still calve gas on September 12th. So those are just a few. We're also just locked in a tour for Soms, where we're going to take our official depth of Soms and see the decommission of the Soms plant, where we have a discussion about where that nuclear waste and how that's going to be stored and moved from those facilities, um, and that will be now November 2nd, so we can just actually lock that in. So I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight, to answer any questions. I'm, I could probably skip right over. I'm Chris Murray, I'm Executive Director. I just started in January, but I am a former official. I served on the Anaheim City Council, Council from 2010 to 2018, and I was on the ACCOC Board as a former council member, um, and, uh, it's just my incredible honor to come back and really immerse in our policy issues and supporting, uh, our cities. So, um, it's my pleasure. I also have Catherine Morrison with me today. She's our director of Member Services. Uh, we have an incredible team, uh, dedicated to supporting our cities, and we're here anytime you need us. So just want to thank you for the opportunity to face and say thank you and answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, listeners. Hey, Chris, um, I want to thank you for being here because well, long time since we've had some of the ACCOC come by, and, um, I think it's important that we keep that open communication with those city councils so they know what benefit, uh, the congressional office.
We're going to start meeting with our city council, so I hope I don't worry, but I will be back next year. We're going to do this every year, meet with all of our councils, staff and council, all get the same briefing and, uh, and just making sure you know how much we appreciate you.
Okay, Chris, you don't have to wait a year. You don't have to wait a year.
Yeah, well, I hope I see you at our committees and our other programs because I promise you'll get value out of that.
Okay, questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Have a lovely evening. God bless you. Thank you for your service.
Okay, that takes care of our presentations. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar, all units, if you take it with my accent. Is there anyone, uh, for the audience to ask?
Mr. Mayor, we have no, no comments.
No written?
No written, no.
Okay, um, I would like to hold 9G. Is there anybody else?
No.
90 and 9G.
Yeah.
Is there a good balance? We're here.
The motion by Mayor Burton Van, I said by council member Torres, I'll have to see who will call though. Council, agency, authority member Torres. Council, agency, authority member Taylor?
Yes.
Council, agency, authority member Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Burton, vice chair Chris Van?
Yes.
And mayor chairman Schaller. Chris, thank you. Now move on to item 9B, which is responsible for Orange County Grand Jury Report dated June 12th, kind of welcome to the neighborhood. Our city's responsible manager, iteration of group homes. Mr. Taylor, your question?
Just that, um, who wrote this? Who wrote all the comments?
So the city manager's office worked in collaboration with the city attorney's office to craft your reply.
Really, that's, um, either defensive or something. I, it, the tone just seemed a little different than what I expected.
I've overseen the preparation of many responses to Orange County Grand Jury Reports, and it, the difficulty lies in the way the Orange County jury, or the Orange County Grand Jury makes their findings and recommendations. They use words that, um, corner the city into accepting kind of an all or nothing, and then also corner the city into trying to make assumptions about our neighboring cities and other regions. So it's not that we intend to be difficult or defensive, we're just trying to be very honest and transparent, and that we can't speak for any other city other than ourselves, and sometimes the precise wording that they use in their recommendations or findings just can't agree with that statement because of the way it's worded. So it is in no way intended to be disrespectful or defensive. We're very appreciative of the topics that the grand jury takes on because it definitely brings exposure and awareness to, and this is absolutely an important issue, so please don't read into our very technical and precise response.
I love that letter. I loved it. I told the city attorney, I loved it. The, the way they phrase those questions was ridiculous, and anybody that would want that go out the door in a business is insane, and the fact that you called them on the car for that, I was so proud of you guys. I thought it was wonderful.
That's good she can testify in the hearing now. Anybody else? Okay, do you have anyone making a motion? Oh, I'd like to, um, move my outside guy.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? During that item passed.
I guess by 9G.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Mayor, we have the item 9G, a word contract to change your construction to consult catch basins, automated retractable screens, and electric pipe screens and completion devices. Mr. Mayor, your question?
Okay, she's, it's a simple question. I was looking at the, at different apparatus, uh, the meshing and all the wiring and everything. Can that block off the, can that block off the tunnels under Catella and under Beach?
As far as the structures that are being installed right now on the catch basin, so these are, um, not substantial enough to cover a storm, storm grade like that. These are more smaller units that go inside the catch basins. Um, but I mean, that's something if, if the council desires, we can look into seeing some.
I was kind of hoping that, uh, that there was some mechanism to do that because the amount of money that the city spends, uh, with fire and police and our public safety people on those other bases probably would be far outweigh what it costs to put up this exact type of grainy, um, to keep the grain falling through there. It also would protect human life because if people happen to be under there during a flash flood or a flood, uh, that would be dangerous. So I think it would serve two big, two purposes, only the security and the other to be public safety. We've had different fires up there, so if, if you get a chance, maybe, uh, we could at least find out if this, if this particular vendor has the ability to do that. And we really only have, um, the one on Western, the one on Catella and the one on Beach.
You definitely need the, those will be the county, so I have to reach out to the county and court as well, uh, just to make sure that, hey, because of the amount of flow that's coming in here, but yeah, definitely I could talk to them about it, and then it may be if that's something you can do, we can look at, uh, talking to the county and court in separate.
Yeah, yeah, we, we probably want to reassess if it's like control people before we do anything, especially on a harbor.
Yeah, that's that, that, that would, yeah, I mean.
I'm really sure that they might support us in this action because they supported us when I brought the idea of putting the plant fencing up around all the storm tunnels in the county. And so they're receptive to public safety, so I don't, I don't think it hurts to ask.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? During that, item 9G passed.
Here we have no open hearings. We have no, uh, business. Do business. This is a limit to the Stanton sidewalk vending ordinance. Mr.?
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, matter 12A is a proposed amendment to Stanton sidewalk vending ordinance. Uh, this was for all the council on June 27, 2023, when the ordinance and analysis was brought to the council to consider any ways that the ordinance could be strengthened. Out of that meeting, several suggestions were made by the council. One was to look into whether the ordinance required county health permits, whether it prevented liquid claims, whether, um, we could add additional distance requirements from certain youth facilities like the Boys and Girls Club and other type of similar facilities, and whether we could have a distance requirement from sidewalk vending residential elder care or senior care facilities. So, uh, our office took a look at that. We concluded that the existing ordinance does already prohibit claims as well as requires federal, state, and local permits, including county health permits. Uh, we did, we are suggesting that the ordinance be updated. There are two sections. We are proposing, uh, adding a subsection X to section 5.74045 to expand that so that vending cannot occur within 500 feet, uh, not only schools, but now also general daycare centers and youth centers. General daycare centers already defined in the ordinance, so we added a definition for youth center so that it's defined to, um, include repreating those facilities that primarily host recreational or social activities for children, including private membership organizations or clubs like Boys and Girls Club. Uh, their suggested change is adding subsection FF to that, that same section 574045, and that would prohibit vending within 500 feet of a residential care facility that is already defined in the Stanton municipal code. Um, and sometimes, uh, one of the things that you'll note in that ordinance is sometimes residential care facilities or elderly care facilities, they kind of blend in to the neighborhoods. We didn't, we wanted to be fair to the vendors so that at the time they take an application from the cit-, from the city, the city will give them a copy of those residential care facilities that they need to have that distance from, will maintain that list, uh, at the city level as well, just to have that balance even. Um, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions. This is T. up for first reading, um, and yes, if you have any other questions, thank you.
Second, good off state properties?
Uh, mayor and council, these are just very narrow amendments to residential care facilities for the elderly and youth oriented facilities.
I think you ever thought of that?
No.
That'd be something that would be important to us. I can.
Uh, mayor and council, sidewalk vending is already comprehensively regulated, including parks, so that is existing ordinance that was not changed. So I believe it's SB 916 that, that was targeted towards parks. So yes, there are already rules on the books regarding vending sidewalk vending in parks.
Uh, federal bills.
So the sidewalk vending ordinance will apply to public sidewalks as well, so whether or not there are, you know, sidewalks in front of federal, local, or state buildings. But again, this is, this is ordinance that applies to Stanton, so I'm not sure it, uh, facilities or federal, federally ordinance.
On the open flag issue, which is very clear, clearly defined, um, which On the open flame issue, which is very clear, clearly defined, would you respond, Chief, would you be responding to open flames as a part of the permit to shut them down?
So just to confirm, the question is, would, if there's an open flame, these vending machines, would the OCA be responsible for this?
Yeah, would you respond to that? If there was an open flame on the public, on Peach Boulevard on the side walk, would you, would you have that agency, would you respond to that or not? If it was reported.
If there's a report as an open flame, if I'm correct, it'd fall on the enforcement, law enforcement officers for municipal code. I don't believe, that's followed from that, but I don't believe we would have the jurisdiction of just responding for an open flame call on the sidewalk to the vendor.
Well, should we have a bonfire in backyard against the neighborhood? Don't we go to those?
If we get a request to respond, we would respond. But what, at that point, though, I think it would fall into a law enforcement municipal code issue versus the fire department issue.
So what would be the difference between having an open fire in the backyard or a sidewalk?
I think the one would be easy, open fire in the backyard, even on private property if it's a, if it's... One being on private property, depending on the bonfire, most times those are allowed unless there's a ordinance within their HOA sometimes or the city. But then on the sidewalk, it's actually falls more on municipal code issue, the law enforcement being the vending machine, have any processing.
Chief, would you, how would you respond to an open flame on each wall on the sidewalk? Now that we have an ordinance?
So how would you do that? Would be, it would be based on municipal code, it would be based on illegal vending part, not the open flame, would be the other, it'd be the hotel. So that, so that call would come in, there's an open flame, there's illegal vending at this location, you know, we would go and we would, you know, we'd address that, whether it was citation, whether it's taken down. It's worked beautifully over the last, I don't know, four or five months with the cars, you know, the healthcare agency. I'd also talk to Jim Ren and kind of look at that as well. This is what we got here, can you guys help us out with this? But like I said, with the cars, you just open flame, that's not just, it's that's usually complied with some other avenues as well, like for example, illegal vending.
Because I remember, I'm not sure if it was a state or county ordinance, I'm not sure if ours says it, but something about having propane bottles, I don't think they're allowed in the public without permits.
Mayor, staff can research that and provide that information to the council and we can just go through that.
Where you're at, I would like to work in that, if it's okay with you guys, is that we reach out to Caltrans and ask them how their position on having propane bottles, live open flames, they're not permitted on each wall. If you get some, you're going to have to.
Can I ask, has there been any like fires lately because of open flames? Has there been any fires like because of open flames?
Well, I remember one of the vendors dumped his charcoal wood fire in a half shell, got one of those half buckets, just dumped it at the curb, walked off. I mean, it's a gunner, but... I mean, basically, I think it's state law that says you can't do that.
We did find a citation in our municipal code that states the sidewalk vendor shall not contain or use propane and natural gas batteries for other explosive or hazardous materials. The vendor shall not use an open flame for the sidewalk vending operation. So if it's in our municipal code, code enforcement can also enforce as well. So now we're very clear on that and the staff can enforce if we get requests for that.
Thank you. I see. Okay, other questions?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so before we put this to a vote, I just want to ask, also to reflect on this ordinance and see how we kind of just are trying to, you know, restrict all of free vending, drop it, instead of looking at the ones that aren't doing it illegally. So I could, so as Jim compared not too long ago, there's not a lot of licenses in the city, right? I think there's like, about, there's zero, right? But why leave the opportunity? Like, why take away the officer, you heard more than immediately tonight, this is what our city wants.
Well, I think you have to look at the health and safety issue. If a person is permitted with the county, permitted with the state, permitted with the city, then that's fine.
Does this language reflect that, or like doesn't?
Councilmember Torres, there are certain state regulations and guidelines that we can't preempt, which does the types of sidewalk vending to a certain degree. Now, on top of that, the county has their requirements to make a vendor in compliance. And we know as of now, there are no vendors who have applied for a county permit, which would be required. So it doesn't shut the door completely on appropriate vending. Again, we can't preempt state law, which there's some protection.
I did want to mention that the changes being proposed today has nothing to do with not allowing sidewalk vending. All we want to do is limit sidewalk vending in areas where there are young children or the elderly because of the health and safety risk. Because, you know, if you're in a daycare facility and your kids want to run out to get ice cream, that's not helpful for the folks who are trying to protect the kids.
So my only concern is that the school's responsibility or the daycare's responsibility and not the city's? Because I mean, if kids are running around out in the street, then that should be on the schools, right, to place, not necessarily the.
So the city's not fixing anything. All we're doing is, at least, my understanding of this ordinance is that we're making it so that they have to be five hundred feet away, or for example, not, a lot of schools will have, will be gated and fenced, but a lot of daycare facilities don't have the funds to fence everything. So a lot of times, for example, the Girls Club, you have a door, kids can go in and have a door, or if you have like a preschool, they may have a playground outside, you know. So I think, for me, when I propose to include childcare centers and youth centers, my understanding is that they do struggle with kids leaving because, you know, you're not going to have a one-on-one ratio with adult or a child. They need one adult with five kids. And so this helps them out a little bit. And even someone with a young child like myself, I can totally see my kid running out buying ice cream, you know, across the street because kids have impulse issues, you know. So I, I don't intend for this to make it a lot harder for us to do sidewalk vending if they choose to. I just want to make sure we protect the kids that we have in our community and make sure it's easier for the daycare facilities to be able to keep our kids safe. So I, you know, if they want to have a sidewalk vending business, they still can, so long as they follow all the rules.
Five hundred feet away from the school, right?
Five hundred feet away.
That feels like it's like two blocks over, you know.
So the school itself, that's already been, and then I just added the youth centers and the daycare. So the school had already had that five hundred feet separation prior.
And there was another to the intent here is that weather rises in California, human trafficking, and unfortunately, it's not, it's right from drugs to, you know, illegal use of children. And now it's coming into this particular enterprise, not necessarily on a large scale that we see, but also on a small scale. As an example, Mr. Ren asked a vendor from Labor Bryant Chapel in the beach, and that person had a brand new car. And it was interesting because the person that came to pick him up had eight more of them in a truck. And so it's not like individual people, it's like an organized network. It's systemic throughout what you count.
So my only just ban the vendors with solvency is not making this year, right? That would require like, you know, apart from that, I feel like we are closing the ability for a lot of our residents to honestly, you know, go in some places that where they do make their own charter, you know, who buys like obstacles, you know, and so.
Yeah, but the problem with that is, is that we've offered just about every vendor in the city an opportunity to come in and to do, to follow our guidelines, state guidelines, and the county guidelines. I think I passed my card out, I passed my card out to every vendor in the city four times, and I've got no response. Yeah, it's great.
Yeah, so I feel like we should create some programs to incentivize people to become licensed, right? If it's either like through a, through like a fund where we could help them, right, with a percentage of, you know, licensing for this for our city or for the county. But I think that we should be proactive instead of just trying to limit the opportunities.
I understand what you're saying, and I think as a city, we have the ability to control the tight streets manner. Just for example, when we have our smoke shop ordinance, I insisted that we have a thousand feet separation from daycare centers, school facilities, things like that, even though the requirement was not a thousand feet. I increased it because I think for our community, we need it and it's best for our kids. So I see what you're saying and I understand that you want to make it lower the barriers for those who want to participate in sidewalk vending. And I did support that, but I still feel that having a five hundred feet separation requirement is still in the best interest of our city. And they can still sell ice cream if they want to, as long as they obviously, you know, get the health permits that they need. But I don't think it hurts to require them five hundred feet away. If parents decide that, yeah, I'm going to buy my kid ice cream, they can still do that. They just don't have to do it right outside where the daycare facility is. And, you know, there's still plenty of places in our city where they could operate, you know. It's not like we're manning it outright.
Right, but my theory is that the biggest demographic, their sales would be kids, you know what I mean? Like, the little kid, right, like the porn guy, right? These are like, you know, the kids that, you know, they're always on the sidewalk. I think that's fine, right? I feel like they should be supervised, right? Their kids in daycares, it's a small, that's our issue. But either way, I just wish that this was a little bit more, or I mean, I guess, more accepting of people who are willing to get the prices.
I think, where's our fee for a business license for something? Twenty-five, is it twenty-five dollars or seventy-five? I know it's not a lot. I think it's twenty-five, if I remember. Who has that answer? Okay. If somebody can't afford it, I don't have a problem with the reason.
Oh, now we should, we should start running.
I mean, I think we should, we should bring that back to later on, if we find that that's difficult. If we find a lot of people that can't afford a license.
I think some of the cities have that, you know, even if this passage is right, we'll still be dealing with food vendors, right? So, you know, I feel like it's just, right, like, we're not going to stop it if this passes today, right? So it's more about enforcement, like I said last time.
But, you know, the other thing too is, I think, I think that the bottom line is health and safety, that's our responsibility. And if somebody's out there selling food unintentionally, that might end up to be a conflict with somebody, then that's our, that's on us. I think that's our responsibility. Okay, is there a discussion? Is there a motion?
One second.
Okay, the call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I have passes with the four oh. To be read in the next week, council members.
Okay. At this time, we will go to twelve B, which is a service agreement with Infinity Technologies for managed information technology for the health desk support.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. The city currently operates six major departments across four locations and utilizes a hybrid IT services model consisting of one full-time in-house staff member supported by an IT contractor. Over time, the technological nature of the council, staff, and community have evolved to a point where the existing delivery model can no longer maintain the city's size and resource of service delivery. As such, staff has recommended restructuring of the delivery of IT services through an enhanced consulting service model. To facilitate a new delivery model, staff issued a request for proposals for managed IT and health desk support services on April fourth, twenty twenty-three. The city received eighteen responses. A four-member committee consisting of the city manager, director of finance, director of public works, and interim HR manager reviewed all eighteen proposals, with the city's management analysts serving as the RFP coordinator and the city's IT specialist serving as technical advisor. After the proposals were reviewed, the top three firms were invited to participate in an in-person interview. After the interview round, Infinity Technologies was determined to have the highest combined proposal and interview score and determined to be the best qualified firm to provide professional services to meet the city's needs. References were checked, and Infinity has extensive experience providing IT services to public agencies throughout California, including in Southern California, the cities of Almerada, Punta DeGale, Paramount, San Juan Capistrano, Seal Beach, Signal Hill, and Tessa. Infinity's Southern California headquarters are located in Irvine, less than twenty miles from Stanton. The resumes of the Infinity Service Delivery Team reflect a broad and deep skill set. Key members of the team include a project manager, network engineer, systems engineer, and OAT technician. In addition, all Infinity employees undergo a background verification process, including live skin fingerprinting through the Department of Justice. That concludes my report, and staff is available to answer any questions. We also have founder and CEO of Infinity Technologies, Mohammed Ahmed, here to answer any of the council's questions.
Welcome.
Can you give me the microphone? Thanks.
Tell us a little bit about your company and what services we're going to get from you and how you're going to be able to improve what we're doing and your relationship, how you're going to work with our IT supervisor.
Yes.
Do you have one? My first test. That's one, two, there we go. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and City Councilmembers. Vice President Mohammed Ahmed. Two tests, there we go. Okay, all right, third time's the charm. Okay, good evening. Vice President Mohammed Ahmed, CEO, President of Infinity Technologies. Honorable Mayor, you asked a couple of questions.
Let me have some personal, we have certain departments right now.
Yeah.
I think, I think our HR department is in the interest of building platforms. How will you go about setting those up?
Yes, so the great thing with us is, I actually was a one-time city employee, just background. I've been in local government for ten, three years. And now, since, you know, eighty percent of our business is mostly local government agencies, we look at what we're providing to other clients or other cities throughout California, and we try to bring in best practices to the city's standards. We understand not one size fits all. All cities have different fiscal responsibilities, different budgets. So if there is a system that you have currently that is not well adequate, we will look at different systems for you. And if we need to hybrid it, per se, create something, we would do that and we would make sure that it's up to the city's standards.
If a particular department needs some type of a program, is that something along the lines of what you would be able to put together for them?
Yes, absolutely. The great thing is, I think, one of the great reasons that I feel, and I get very excited about technology as a whole, especially serving local government, because I feel there's a lack of technology in local government. Not every city knows all the different resources out there and available to them. And we strive on making sure that you're aware what works and what doesn't. This is a very heavy knowledge base of us that we, but it works in other cities and what hasn't worked. So for example, a salesperson can come in and sell you the greatest software in the world, but when you go to use it, it's not working to your liking. So we use that knowledge base and say, yes, the software doesn't work for you, or it doesn't work for you. And that, in turn, really makes sure that the money's well spent. So we adapt, we also look at your fiscal responsibility and what your budget is, and we say, yes, the city's done this. Talk to them, see how they've done it, and you're able to apply it to the software that you have.
So basically, if each department can tell our IT person what their needs are, relay that information to you, it's not the solution.
Absolutely.
And you do the work, right?
We help with the work. So we bridge the gap between the vendor and the department. And that's the great part about it, is we make sure that what the vendor is going to provide to you is going to be what we provide.
Okay, when you say you help with the work, we only have one IT person. And so one of the things that I would least like to see is that you be able to help with some of the projects and things and things that could be done physically or, you know, as you're putting them together. You know, one man can't run everything. And I think that's why we call upon your professional services, so that you can assist them in the overall program that we have here. That department only has one member. He can't do everything. But by having you and your organization, you should be able to help in all aspects of our department, all of our IT needs. So by helping, I hope it's more than just telling them what to do. We need more hands-on.
No, absolutely. And I think for us, to even go further, and I was talking to the city manager about this as well, there's like a major deployment that's happening, computer will have laptops. Or even in emergency, you need more than one person, two people or three people, you know? So that's one thing that we strive on, is to make sure that even that one person or two people that are on site, they don't feel burdened to make the extra people to help out with those projects that the city has to do.
And how many personnel does the hazard unit have? Sixty-five, sixty-three thousand, almost five.
So if I can answer that question, I do want to clarify the actual anticipated spend for Infinity annually is one hundred and seventeen thousand. The operating budget does include one sixty-three. That includes money for the transition between our current vendor and also any unanticipated IT projects that we need to address. So the staff time right now is unlimited, help desk support, twenty-four seven. And that's any day of the week. Michelle's working at two AM on the budget, and so she'll be available to help her. Systems engineers, twenty hours a month onsite, IT technician, thirty-two hours onsite, and a project manager, twelve hours remote. Mohammed and I have talked in depth about during the first year, obviously, we're trying to understand what the best configuration of people will be onsite and remote. They're willing to work with the city to see how those hours can be shuffled to best meet our needs if needed. And in terms of the responsibility, I just want to clarify, he said we would do, do the help of the work. I think the confusion there was many of the projects, programs, and platforms come from vendors, and they have their own installation team. So we wouldn't go in and install their product. They would, again, be the liaison between that vendor and the setup. But absolutely, one hundred percent, we recognize Martin cannot continue as the PCT has been. And why we're so excited about this, this new professional relationship is just like we get the full breadth and depth of expertise and skill, hardware, software, that we get when we contract with the city attorney, when we contract with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, when we contract with OCFA. As a small city, that's what we're getting for those contracts. Much more depth, much more breadth than we could get on our own. So we're really excited that Martin will have a chance to really focus on specific areas instead of trying to wear ten thousand IT hats once.
Now, you said we need a transition from our previous rhythm. Does that mean we have to pay to take some of the information with us? Are we going to, are we going to make sure we get everything that we need from here before we go?
No, there is a transition plan in place where we would get all the information from the current vendor as they exit out. And I think it's Martin already has most of that information. So we're just making sure that there's any additional information that they might have, Martin might not have. We can get that information.
And our existing vendor was invited to propose, they chose not to, so they knew this was coming from us.
Great, too. It's one of the services that you would perform is keeping the city advised on the latest security measures. And are you taking an evaluation of our network to see how secure it is, how functional it is, how fast it is? Are we headed towards a best network? Are we going to keep the, what are we doing there?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, our first and foremost, for the first, you know, thirty days we're on site, is looking at all those things. Especially cybersecurity, as you're all aware of. You know, that's a big part of special education schools. Your information is on the web, you know, for warrants to all the staff names, right? So making sure that city's still secure, also best practices are being performed, not only from antivirus, but ransom protection. Even also discussing the, you know, the ransomware, sorry, the risk management department, to make sure the insurance is tied into that, right? And lastly, training, I guess, for risks of cybersecurity is what we're going to do in this room, right? So going through all of that is definitely part of that, making sure discussions happen.
The latest trends are five channel attacks, and so that's costing many, many, people a lot of money.
So I noticed that in your contract, you state that you have unlimited twenty-four seven health desk services. So let's say somebody has a problem at two AM. Do they call you? Is there a chat online, or how does that work? And what is the wait time to get a response?
No, it's, it's local. You have a local number that you call, and you would get somebody at that time. And we support police departments in Southern California and Northern California as well. So we are twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, because dispatch never stops. So, yeah, so you would get somebody, and then that person's able to resolve the issue remotely. We need to go onsite, we go onsite. During the heat wave last year, we had many sites go down because of generated issues. We were able to go onsite, make sure we were able to bring all the systems back online. The other thing we preach is productivity. So we definitely put things on the network to make sure that we're, they're reporting out. So we would see those alerts before city staff would see those alerts of internet going down or power going off. So we'll definitely know what's going on on the network.
So what's the average wait time for somebody who makes a phone call until they actually get to talk to a person?
What we put somebody on, what we put on paper is fifteen minutes max. But we usually, our SLA, our service level, we manage within five minutes.
And then if they were to submit a ticket or a request, what's the average wait time for that to get to call?
Same thing. So we usually think of probably on the third, fourth ring. But it's mostly, we have to have a response after the fifteen minutes.
Does it include our council, city, desktop?
Yeah, all city licenses.
Perfect. Are you going to leave your name and number? I have a computer, but whatever. Any other questions? Anyway, welcome to the family.
Thanks.
We're very happy to have you, and this is going to be very successful. We appreciate you having the opportunity to serve like you do here at RC.
No, I, we are very happy to be on board, and we're excited. Excellent.
Yes, that being said, I'm going to approve, I'm moving to twelve A, would you?
Call favor.
Hi.
Any opposed? During that, I am twelve B, passing.
Okay, come up, get your official city pen. That won't get you out of the party. Okay, moving on. All communications at this time, members of the public, may address the city council, its accessories. The standard housing authority regarding any items within our subject area jurisdiction. No access may be taken on non-essential items. Do we get any correspondence?
Just remember, we have that.
Is there anyone from the audience who would like to address the city council?
Sorry, this is up to Mike. If you could please state your name for the record, if you have your name.
Yes, sir.
People will hire for you.
Very good, very good.
Thank you so much.
My name is Derek Clitney, Honorable Mayor Schauer, city council, city staff. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight to, I am, first off, I am a landowner in the Southgate. This makes use of all the lay zone. Longtime landowner, and I've been coming to the city for the last fifty years, over fifty years. And actually lived in the city for several years as well. And so my objective in speaking tonight is to convey, I have a desire to make the city better. And I'm on a street right now with a landowner that is challenging my assumptions about the trajectory of the city. It's my understanding that a project within the city is approved with the expectation that the operations of that building will be consistent with its CUP and with its approval. I'm along Catherine Avenue, and I've got a neighbor here that joins me. And the assisted living facility, without going too far in the weeds, the construction was not fine to the immediate community. I was the trash picker upper for four years. It was not fine. And once it was done, once that construction was completed, I was very grateful. And I had the expectation that the operations would be brought to the level of the level of the facility, the level of, the nice level of the construction, of the construction. What's happened is the operations are not professional. It's affecting the negative, the community in a negative way. And I won't go into the ways in which it's negatively affecting. Yes, I've shared a document with Mayor Schauer, and I'm hoping that you all read it or those that have the best interest will read it. And I'm just, I just, the big picture is I want so much of this community to move in a certain direction. I care so much about the area. And when you've got operations of facilities that are not consistent with at least my standards, my, I'm down in Yale. I lived two lives early, I lived half of my life here, half of my life down there. And there's just contrast. And I just, I have so, such big hopes for this city, you know, for this area. And I'm hoping you all will pay attention to the document that I've created. I'm hoping you'll share it with the mayor. And I really look forward to working with all of you in my own regard, with my own personal, with the thought of it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back, close it, and we'll carry on. All right, we're now at Mayor, Chairman, Council, Agency, Initiating Business. Okay? Mayor reports, council authority announcements. Okay. Let's see who we have up here. Okay, Mayor Portia, tell us all about National Day.
It was fantastic. Thank you so much to the OCFA as well as the City Sheriff's Department for bringing out everything. It was incredible, the forces, the helicopter, the SWAT team, everything was there. It was so incredible for our community to be able to have a chance to get that close up. My seven-year-old was so excited to see the happy and everything. So thank you so much, that was amazing. I was, the what? Yeah, the drone from the school, to see, to see that little, he called it rover, but I'm not sure what it's called, something else. And to see our firefighters out there.
Yes.
Helicopter, band, and a deep block was pretty impressive.
God, does it get you.
Yeah, a little bit when it took off.
No, it was, I think it was probably one of the best we've had as far as the demonstrations and the exhibits. It was nice because every aspect of both police fire and the ambulance service were on display. And I think the kids were the ones that had the most fun. You know, because if you weren't getting a chance to see with a helicopter, it's like on the inside, or to get a ride, if you're ready, you know, those are things that kids will remember. Remember, there's three things kids want to be. They want to be a trash truck driver, they want to be an apartment, or they want to be a police. So I think we gave them all three that they needed. Yes, true.
The thing that got me was how much fun the firefighters and the policemen were having at the event. I mean, the firefighters were running around and cheering and just having such a great time. I was so good to see, and the policemen were all excited about showing off their toys. And so that really got me. I thought that was just wonderful. I mean, talk about impacting the community, just the look on all our faces impacting the community. So thank you, thank you for having great teams of guys, because they were having a good time that night.
Zenia. I already sent you an email, but I just want to let you know that the staff, the troops that were in leadership, the volunteers, and your recreation people, they did a stellar job. It's kind of interesting, before the movie started, we had everything cleaned up. That was because the trucks, the police and fire were very slow with the leaving. But it all worked out really well. It was how they organized. I appreciated all of the different agencies and groups over there showing what they can do to help our communities. And that turned out really well. The accommodations were second to none. And it was just one of the best we've ever had. So if you'd please let everybody know that, I would appreciate it very much. Anything else? Okay, well now move on to. Any odds for future meeting? Okay, I have a couple, so. So. All right, number one is the twenty-two freeway and Garden Grove Boulevard. It's time that we as the council take a serious look at finding out what we can do to help our different cities. It involves five different agencies. California Highway Patrol. It involves the Caltrans, Janet Wend, Treetop, the City Council on Garden Grove, and the City Council on West. It seems that it's been falling on that here is too long, and I am so tired of it. I know some of our reservation is that the other cities don't have the program that we have, so we get the blunder. They have been cleaning it up. Garden Grove today and yesterday had so many cars out there, couldn't even keep track of them. Fire was out there today because somebody tried to burn down a sidewalk out by the car wash. It's basically on control. If we don't get some kind of resolution, it's just going to continue to impact our community. People think it's us because it's the entryway into our city. So I'd like to maybe brainstorm a little bit and see what we can do with the Siren, with the law enforcement, even fire, and see what we can come up with and what their recommendations are. Number two, I want to take a look at what I classify as habitual transients. These are transients that have been served and asked for help over seventy-five times. But they've been issued citations, and they refuse help. And I think we have to come up with a solution of how we can either help these individuals wherever their needs are. I know that Care Court is going to start August the fifteenth. I will be sending a video to all of you so you can view that. And to see if it's something that might work for our community. But we definitely have to do something, not so much citywide, but on private property. You know, our private property, property owners and businesses are being inundated, and they all have no trespassing signs up. But it doesn't seem to be effective. And finally, prostitution. Right now, it's embarrassing. Senator Reader, of whose office we contacted, and I'm going to continue to contact him. I'm going to continue to send him pictures. Where is going on in our community within decent exposure? And the fact that they're standing in the middle of the traffic, day and night, causing a traffic hazard? I mean, this is going to stop. Now, one of the recommendations that I'm going to be discussing that evening will be, maybe we can get some kind of an exemption from that Senate bill for state highways. And that's where you need to proceed. These are things that I get plenty of phone calls, I'm sure you all do too. I get plenty of emails to a point where I begin to get inundated. As the summer wears on, there's people in each district, especially over District One, that were having this problem. And I don't know if there's a solution, but I'm sure that if we at least take a look at how we can accommodate the people, this is something that happens, this is a reality, how we can either help them or direct them by what's going on. That being said, that's all I have. Okay. Anything for a future study session? We are going to be, are we going to have that take on the, what was it? Council?
So on tonight's item, under consent, there was an extension just term to complete the town center specific plan, and that will be brought to the council for adoption. adoption.
Okay. I found that, I think it's also important that we understand what the overlay did to us. I know we did the overlay on somewhere in your quarters, what it did, it isolated in one parcel on the corner of Magnolia and Cerritos, there's a gas station for twenty-five years, and because we overlaid it, it's, the only thing surrounding it is all commercial, there's no residential there except the city of Anaheim, and we're not allowed to put a gas station there, which would generate about seventy-five thousand dollars worth of sales tax a year, because we have to buy a house there. Now, who would buy a house across the street on the corner from the Magnolia Bird Park, right across the street from Super King Market on the corner of Magnolia and Cerritos on a seven thousand square foot lot? I mean, it's insane. Anyway, I think I would appreciate the fact that we revisit some of the things that whoever did it in the past, to see what we can do, because I don't think we're using our land the best, to our best use, that's all. Okay. Jerome, too.
Oh, is that on the server?
So this evening, we have item fifteen C, which is city council initiated item for discussion regarding mitigation efforts of the theft of catalog converters within the city. Mayor Portman?
So at our last meeting on July eleventh, I had agendized figuring out ways to mitigate the theft of catalog converters. I know that in my neighborhood, there were several residents being saying that, five A.M., somebody had stolen their catalog converter, and so I don't know if our city has anything in our books ordinance wise to address. I know that a while ago, there was a kind of a wave of cities that did updates for ordinance to address that, and I know that on the state level, it might have been something as well. But for me, beyond the ordinance side, I also feel like I've seen other cities do things like etching services, or perhaps giving residents information about how to age it, or perhaps having a way for them to report it and feel like they should report it, because I think that whole thing, I noticed twice with my neighbors, is why don't you report it? And there was just this feeling that, oh, nothing's going to happen, it's already lost, or I just feel as if maybe that is a relationship that we need to build, and tell people why it's important, like these kinds of things, and they have a ring camera, they have footage, help with the destination, or anything like that. I'm not sure what else we could do, but perhaps staff might have some ideas, but discuss something.
First, I mean, if you did the consent of the council this evening, staff can certainly conduct research, there's a lot of best practices we can remember others they've kind of gone before, as I know that OCSD has lots of campaign materials, and we can just really highlight those, and then bring to the councils some options if you choose to be more engaged with helping with it.
I hope, I will have the consensus of my fellow council members, I don't know if it's an issue in your neighborhood, but I know that my neighborhood, especially with the types of cars that are on our streets, it seems to be getting one.
Yeah, mine also. Well, okay. Okay, great, Jerome. Okay, item.
Let's see, let's go, make sure it's okay with it.
All the, the city council consensus to report, and direct the staff to pursue the research and the staff report on this item, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry that aside, the city council consensus.
Okay, we go to a legal meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Council, I have no ideas.
And happy, happy vacation, really. Actually, welcome back, I'll see you next.
Thank you. You know, I just wanted to take just a couple of minutes, I know you put on council achieved items, three items for consideration by the rest of the council for agendization, but because you brought it up, and I'd just like to address a couple of the things that staff are doing, we, staff are equally frustrated in the council with these quality of life issues that we're seeing, and I just want to reassure council and the community as they're listening to this, of our ongoing daily efforts in relation to, and Mayor, you and I have talked in depth about these issues as well, so in relation to the twenty-two freeway issue, Assembly Member Treetop is convening a meeting with the city managers, but maybe it would be appropriate to broaden the group right now, it's just the city managers of Stanton, Party Book of Westminster, it's currently scheduled for October second, but maybe we should broaden that group of stakeholders, we can consider that. In relation, in regards to the prostitution, we have been in talks with Senator Reader's office, we have heard from his chief of staff about what their position is, I'm working with Captain Walters to pulls up data based on the chief of staff's requests to see what real impacts our city is facing. They believe that it's too soon since that legislation has passed for us to really be impacted, and just, just so you know, that there is a ground swell of cities who are pushing back against this legislation and their feelings impacts. So Compton, Emeryville, Luclin, San Diego, and Stanton were the five that have reached out to their office, and we're willing, we've invited them to come and see if this was the intent of their legislation, so we are working progressively and proactively as much as we can with the powers that be to, and we understand that revoking the legislation is most likely not something that Senator Reader and staff will be on board with, but we are trying to get that to align it, to really accomplish what we were trying to do, and hopefully help these, and we certainly provide for information at future council meetings, thank you.
Welcome, Mayor. Thank you. Jerome. Right. Good evening, honorable Mayor, council members, and city staff, it's my pleasure to provide you the following OCFA operational report for the month of July on the fourth of three. During the month of July, the OCFA responded to a total of three hundred and forty-seven incident, excuse me, incidents within city limits. Of those three hundred and forty-seven incidents, twelve of those were fire-related, three hundred and fourteen EMS medical-related, and twenty-one of those had houses conditions or service faults. The OCFA also responded to a total of fifty-five incidents within the unincorporated areas, Orange County Service five, Fire Station four to six. Of those incidents, one was fire-related, fifty-one were EMS related, and three were houses conditions or service faults. On record, July has been our busiest month so far for 2023, with a total of four hundred and two incidents, or responses, or fifty incidents below our monthly average of three hundred and fifty-two falls a month. That said, I'll have to report that through the month of July, with even thirteen fire responses and twenty-nine responses to traffic collisions, a mall of incidents were mitigated with minimal resources, kept small in nature, not requiring additional resources or informal notifications. But in the month of July, the OCFA are focused on safety messages, we are focused on water safety, outdoor activities, vegetation management, wildfire evacuations, and of course, safety around the Fourth of July. Our social media posts, for OCFA outdoor activities, were on vegetation management at dying plants, and then wildfire related months in, months of July. As a reminder, you can visit our website, www.ocla.org, to reference all our safety flyers printed in multiple languages that can be utilized with any of your city's social media platforms or publications. Also, in the month of July and August, we'd like to remind everybody about any kind of digging that's going on in the city, whether it be by a homeowner or a contractor, we want to remind everybody to utilize the eight-one-one service, it's a free service provided by Big Alert, and what they'll do is, you call eight-one-one, and these are two days prior to any kind of project we're going to be taking, and they'll send all utility companies out coming, Sprague, Bay, and Mark, where all the utility lines are, and it's really for, it's a free service, it's available for contractors, and it's just for providing safety from preventing somebody from hitting a utility line or gas line, causing disruption or possibly injury or damage. For some upcoming events coming up here shortly, once again, OCFA firefighters will be participating with the annual Muscular Dysphagies Association Field New Campaign. This event is going to take place this Friday and Saturday at the intersection of Nutella and, I lost my drink, Nutella and Not Avenue. The Muscular Dysphagies Association, along as you work with fire departments across the country to raise funds for research for muscular dystrophy, ALS, and related neuro-muscular diseases. I'm proud to report that last year, OCFA firefighters raised seventy-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-two cents. With that amount, we were the top fundraisers, we were, excuse me, that said, we were the top fundraisers in ABC in California, and the ninth highest in the nation with that money that we raised, so we're very proud of that. This year, we'd like to encourage all of you to come out and interact with our firefighters, and I said they're going to be at the intersection of Nutella and Not Avenue between the hours of ten o'clock to two o'clock, this Friday and Saturday, collecting funds from the public. And then also another great event coming up, what we'd like to, we'd like to get noticed on is our annual Girls Empowerment Camp, this will be taking place this October seventh and eighth. This is where we invite young females and males out to the OCFA training grounds, where we introduce them to the career of fire service. We have live demonstrations for them to participate with poles, ladders, and extinguishing fires, and utilizing chainsaws. It's a great opportunity to expose our younger generations to a career in the OCFA, or in fire service in general, so I'd like to promote that, and we also, also campaign flyers, we did send you as well for those, as we utilize them in social media campaigns. This concludes my report, regarding fire authority for a report that works through the month of July, and I'm going to ask any questions.
Are you men helping fight the Santiago fire? Broke out.
The one that was up on the, that's Santiago, the peak?
Yeah.
Yes, we did send resources up there to that fire to assist, the fire was actually located, located on the Cleveland National Forest, so you have forest logs from the Forest Service, and the OCFA, and also a cow fire from Riverside. That fire was contained in two point, just under two point five acres.
That's great, it looked like it was going to move so fast that we could see the helicopters and everything fighting the fire, so that's great, glad you got it.
Chief, I wrote a really nice article about your personnel in the newspapers coming out Friday, so make sure they get a copy of it. On behalf of the Attorney Council, I want to thank you and firefighters and deputies that gave all that time to us that day. It's very special, and I think the thing that was nice was, I think, as Cheryl said, they were having more fun than the kids, and I think that's what it's all about, and the camaraderie between the two departments is growing to where this, it's great symbiosis, because I think, I think we all have our own cultures to some degree, but I think those cultures are beginning to blend, and that's just going to make us more successful. So again, thank, if you would thank everyone, I know the younger is name, and even, I was able to get ahold of Bill, our resident over at Falk, so they, they are sort of, I don't think you'd have asked for credit, and you guys were all great, thank you all for being there and supporting.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate the messaging, and I'll pass on your message earlier to the firefighters that are working that, I say thank you to that.
You were as many as the other guys, but you guys held your own. All right, just ready to head to business. Okay, everybody have a great week.